Welcome to our monthly meeting. We'll start it out with the pledge of prayer. Stan, will you do the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, Lord, we just invited you into this room to conduct school business, Father. We see what's going on on TV and it just helps us realize how blessed we are here at Cherokee Public Schools. We left up our administrators, our teachers, our students. Father, just please continue to keep us safe and healthy. In Jesus' name we pray. It's seven o'clock. I call the meeting to work. Judy, you can take your roll. Number two, we have a public comment. Eden Conoyer will address the Board of Education regarding the student dress code. Should we give him three minutes to address the Board of Education? If you're ready.
So from as early as I can remember when I was a child in school, my teachers had always decided for me and every other girl what was and was not appropriate for school. Our shorts need to be as long as our fingertips, our tank top straps need to be at least two inches wide, our bra straps weren't allowed to show, et cetera, et cetera. The reasons girls are told these ridiculous rules is because they're exposed to skin and tight clothes could be found distracting to boys in an inappropriate-for-school environment. If dress codes are enforced in middle school even before, that means that while learning about long division and three states of matter, girls are also learning the false importance put on their appearance. Girls just like boys are in school to learn. Yet when a girl is disciplined for wearing shorts by hot day, it gives the impression that their education is not as important as whether or not they are dressed appropriately. If these rules are only being enforced on one gender rather than all genders, then how does it make it fair for all the students? Why are female shoulders, midriffs, legs, and arms seen as being distracting when males are not? When girls are told that they are being too sexual by showing certain body parts of their bodies, certain parts of their bodies, it makes people view women as sexual objects rather than human beings. These dress codes are often way too big. An extremely common dress code rule is shorts that reach your fingertips. A rule I might show you that is not towards the boys. Fingertip length differs greatly upon different body types. Letting some girls wear much longer shorts than other girls. Another problem with that, girls with bigger breasts are also targeted more, especially when the teacher, principal, et cetera, is taking the "it will distract boys" approach. The "it will distract boys" approach is misogynist junk. This is when a teacher enforces a dress code because the girl's clothing will apparently distract a boy from their learning. Meanwhile, the girl will have to change or get clothes, taking away from her time so the boy can learn. This is just adding to the ever-present problem of undermining female education in favor of educated males. It also perpetuates rape culture by implying that boys shouldn't have to control their urges and that it's a girl's responsibility to watch what she wears, otherwise it's her fault. The problem with the dress code gets enforced. A lot of the times, a student breaks a code in a minor way. This leads a teacher to looking teachers, principals, et cetera, to looking at the student up and down during class in the hallway, trying to determine if they look sexual enough to be a problem. The sexualization of children and teens by these adults is disgusting. In cases, teens, it causes teens to constantly worry instead of letting the focus on their work. A lot of times, female teachers dress for their girl students, modeling the societal problem of girls being overly judgmental of other girls' clothing. The dress code in school perpetrates rape culture and sexualizes girls and unfairly targeted girls, especially those with pervier body types. It takes away from the learning environment and creates stress and uncomfortable situations. The strict dress code pushed and forced onto young girls from such an early age is only sexualizing them further and promotes sexism towards women. I believe that our girls deserve better.
Thank you. Number three, we have approval of consent agenda, A through G. Go ahead, Bryce, if you have anything to break down.
If you'll look at the first page on the general time expenditures. There's several figure amounts. Bismarck, Alphap Electric. An amount of nine thousand nine hundred seventeen. And that, again, that's just larger due to the longer summer, higher temperatures. And we've kind of expected that. Hopefully over the next few months, we can see a decrease in that area. Center for Education Law, seventeen hundred, that's returning legal fees. Testament of Needs Preparation for Charles, W. Carroll, Augur, an amount of five thousand. City of Cherokee, that is quite a bit higher. That's a couple hundred dollars higher than what it usually is. And that's because of the increased water rates that have gone up. We did spend eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, which was coming out of the building fund, to replace the meters. And so we downsized those, which saved us several hundred dollars by doing that. And after doing that, we haven't had any issues. We thought there might be some issues with volume and things like that. But so far, everything I've heard is everything working properly. So we did save some money. We'll have to keep an eye on it starting in January at the end because the overreduces and the limits to the city bill, those will still up at that point. So we're gonna have to keep a pretty close eye on that. Right now, if I had to guess, I would say our city bill total for the year is probably gonna be somewhere between five and six thousand dollars more than what it was for the year. So those things are, we're trying to control those as much as we can. Had we not switched out meters, I think that difference probably would have been well over ten thousand dollars cost to us. So eight hundred and twenty-five dollars was definitely worth it. Most of the other things on there, the higher amounts, are just kind of routine things. Occupational therapy costs, custodial supplies, internet. We did purchase some more first grade books. We received textbook money, so that's what that's utilized for. Bus repair and towing, that was a result of the cheap bus, the brick down we had at Learn. We still have a few little issues with it. We'll look with the mechanic and he's helped us out with those. Renaissance Learning, that's a one-time expense. And those are things that we use a lot in the library. And so that's where that comes in. Circle H Cleaning, we talked about that. Circle H Clint Parsons and his company are coming in. And they come in three times a week. And they come in deep clean, sanitize our restrooms, they mop the hallways. Those things that we're not able to do on a day-to-day basis anymore because of the short custodial staff that we have now. So this has really been helpful, to have them come in and they've done a really good job for us. So. Alphap County Clerk, financial state preparation fees. That's something that, it's kind of nears me, but that's an expense that's come out. I believe that it goes back to, it's part of county. And I'm sorry, I can't explain this a little bit better, but I'm still trying to understand it. There's just some financial prep fees for some things that have gone on or happened in the past to the county that we've had to look into concerning the school. And so these are kind of honestly some back charges, some expenses that have happened in the past. We're just now seeing them, so. That's the main ones there. So hopefully next month, we'll see some of these items, especially the bigger ones like the Testament of Needs Prep fee and Renaissance. We don't have those bigger expenses every month. Building fund, I don't think that there should be much there. Those are just some monthly spring fees. We did have a small issue, excuse me, one restroom. We had to call a plumber board. And then we had some problems with the digital sign in front of the elementary. We've got that, I think that's fixed now, if I know that too. So there's some things that we had to order there, some replacement parts for it. Child nutrition fund, another expense we got there is through the service fund. Activity fund report, Kendra was not able to be here, but she didn't really have anything. It's just kind of business as usual, as far as that report goes. Things coming in, gave receipts, concession, and then official cost and those types of things somehow. Samantha, do you have anything you'd like to add? Treasure report.
No, I don't.
Anything else, Bryce?
That's all I've got.
Okay, I appreciate it. You guys need any additional minutes to look over anything? Otherwise, I'll be right on you. All right. Does anyone made a motion, Curtis, second?
Little Bill?
Yes.
Good one?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Yes.
Just to be clear, that was A through G. Was that your motion, Desiree?
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. I assume that was it. I just didn't want to. Number four, discussion of whether to approve or not to approve amendments to the middle school, high school dress code policy for the 21, 22 school year. What do you got?
I got one.
We review our handbook every year. And part of that handbook is what the dress code. And as referred, there were some concerns brought to me earlier in September. This is not something that is just going on here, I can say that. There's more and more discussions. I've talked to several schools over the past month and what's going on there and some of the issues that they're facing. The bottom line is that there is no perfect policy when it comes to dress code. There will always be differences of opinion and what people believe are appropriate and not appropriate. But it's up to us to set some boundaries, and there does need to be some boundaries. School is the place to learn and education of students must come first. I have sent our current dress code into the OSSBA and they have reviewed it. They've sent back some notes. And there were some things in there that needed to be addressed, needed to be changed, outdated a little bit. But there's nothing in violation in our current policy. We're not in violation of any laws or anything like that that would be considered as discriminating towards anyone. So what we have to do is we have to find what works for us the best. I did make some revisions, and I did that in working with our student council. And that's something that a lot of schools will do, is they get their student council involved in some of these decisions that form some policy that affects those students. So I've met twice with them over a period of a couple weeks. Once with the entire student council, with all representatives and officers. And then we came back to the table a week later. And I just met and sat down with the student council officer team. And that's something that I've started doing. We're gonna have some monthly meetings that way and to kind of get our communication going between, you know, our administration and our student body and see if there are some other issues that we can get into. Not to find things that are wrong, but find where our strengths are also and deal with them. We really, after listening to their input, there were a few things that were a little bit confusing. And so there was some things in there about heights and how we define heights and that it was a tight if it didn't have a pocket. And there are things that come up from time to time that we may have specific issues going on because of maybe some fashion trends at the time and stuff like that that has to be addressed that way. But they felt like, you know, that really was something that was kind of confusing. And so we took that out. And so if you look down, it's the one, two, three, four, sorry. It's the six bullet points on that paper. It reads the pants lower, outer garments, including jeans with holes above the mid thigh. Same as the required short length, allowing skin to show or not allowed. So that was one thing that we addressed, was holes. You gotta put some limits on some stuff. And I've got two kids in my house, and I know that there is all kinds of clothing out there. It used to be that we didn't allow clothing with any holes added at all. But that can be an issue according to the OSSBA attorney. Some students may only have pants that have holes and it's not by design. Because that's what they have. So we have to take those kind of things into consideration. But when we look at the, you know, the purpose of it, we try to use a little common sense there. We're gonna put a limit on shorts, and then those kind of things need to fall along. So students suggested that that be one of the things that we can change and clarify, and so we did that. The one above it, tight fitting knits, spandex, cotton pants, leggings, must be worn, dresses, skirts, or shirts extending past the hips, and must not be transparent. So, and again, these were the suggestions that came from student council. So from our students, then they felt our dress code was very fair. I shared some other schools' dress codes, policies with them. And there are some out there that, I'm not gonna name names, but there are some out there that I do feel like probably target females a little more than that. I don't feel that ours is one that does that. I think ours addresses clothing that can be deemed as inappropriate. And school is for education. It's not to make fashion statements. And we do have to have some rules and some guidelines as to, you know, what that should be. There's not a lot of changes in here. We did have some conflicting things, and so just some stuff that we redid. For example, there was a bullet point that talks about no tank tops. But then down at the bottom, it said shoulder straps had to be three inches wide. Well, if you have a shirt that's three inches, that's a tank top. So there's just some things there that I think over the years, things have got added and not subtracted. So they suggested that, you know, as long as, you know, the shoulders are still three inches wide, tank tops can be worn. And that's really what it has been. So Mr. Pruitt and I have talked about that, and we agree that that's fair. You know, early in August, there's probably gonna be more of that type of clothing that's worn. But it shouldn't be an issue. I mean, it shouldn't be a problem. But you do have to define some things. I mean, there has to be, you know, you gotta put some three inches shoulder strap width. I mean, you gotta draw some lines.
Limitations.
Yeah, not just limitations, but you have to clarify, you know, what those things are.
Was there an incident or anything that arose that caused this clarification?
You know, usually what happens is something, you know, somebody will get dress coded and it gets, then there's the attention to the matter. I don't feel like, and Mr. Pruitt can jump in if he feels I'm wrong, but since I've been here and been an administrator, we've always had one or two issues with students and dress code, and it's usually taken care of pretty quickly. It's never been a big problem. And I don't know that a lot of these things that are in here cause distractions during the day. Still think you have to have some guidelines that you have to follow. But it's really, you know, no, I would say it's not. It hasn't been a big issue, but there's been some things called out, you know? So we're trying to define some of those things. One of the big deals that we did talk about, and I wanted to discuss here, there are changes in trends and fashion. And so, I mean, we do wanna be aware of those things. The length of T-shirts has become something, a little bit of an issue. And that's because in our old policy, it says there will be no bare midriff shirts. Well, I think that it's very hard to define what that means. If you say no skin showing at all, that's one thing that we can do. But the shirts these days, most of them are waist, they go to the waist. And if you're walking down the hall, occasionally, there may be some skin that shows. But there is a difference in that, and there's a difference in a shirt that is specifically designed to show off the stomach and midriff. I mean, there is a big difference in that. Now, trying to define that by putting a one inch or two inch, I think that's, I really feel like those things are almost impossible for us to do. And so, you know, what we came up with and what the student council agreed and suggested, and they felt was very fair, and I will say that the student council officer team, there are five female students and two male students on that officer team. And the meeting that I had, one of the male officer members wasn't able to be there for the entire meeting. So the majority was female students on that. And they suggested that if we could put something where the shirts had to extend to the waistline with a belt while standing, that was fair. Because there's gonna be, there's gonna be some times, if you have a shirt on like that, if you come in here in the library and you reach up to grab a book, of course, it's gonna show something. But you're not doing that all the time. And you're not walking around with, you know, that much skin showing. Again, school's not the place for those things. It's just not. And so we wanna try to use some common sense and address these issues and take these things seriously. I'll be honest, having a daughter myself, I understand that it's difficult for young women this time, this day and age. There's a lot of pressure out there that shouldn't be, or just is. That's a whole other issue. This is a small part of all of that, honestly. There's a lot of things out there, and there's a lot of things that as a school, I don't know that we can fix. I don't think it's our complete responsibility to have to do those things. Quite honestly, a lot of that stuff has to be taken care of now. And when it's not, we're left to deal with some of those consequences. So we have to have some rules and some guidelines. We can't just not have anything in place. Again, I think the best approach was what we did. We sat down with the student council, we got their input. They're the ones that this really affects more than anybody. They felt that these changes were fair. We're not changing a lot. We're trying to define some things and take somewhat of a common sense approach. Our short length, our dresses or skirts, it doesn't say fingertip. Our language says mid thigh, which is about the same. But again, you have to have a way to measure. Most schools use the dollar bill length, which that's what it used to be or width. That's about two inches. I can tell you right now, as a parent that has a daughter who is pretty tall for her age, it's impossible to find clothes like that. But it's not impossible to find shorts that will go to mid thigh and things like that. That's doable. Again, I don't think there's anything in here. We've had the OSSBA review our policy. There was one line here that she did suggest that we take out, and it had to do with cleavage as being part of the language in our policy. She suggested that we remove that. There were some problems that come up with some other districts and that it would be in our best benefit to remove that language. So we have removed that. But again, overall, this hasn't changed our policy really much. I think that the way that these things are worded now, I think that it gives our administration and our teachers, I think, a little bit more room to use some judgment and make some good decisions. And that's another thing that we will be addressing, is how these situations win and if they do come up, how they're dealt with in the classroom for the kids and coming from the teachers. Because how that situation is handled will determine the law, you know, as far as the kids and how they go. And that has to be addressed. And I'm sure things are not perfect, but it's something that we can get better at. And I think we can come up with a consistent approach that's fair. It's not going to be embarrassing for students. So again, you know, just, there's a lot to it. But I think that what we've got here, I think is pretty good. Mr. Pruitt has looked over it, and again, feel free to jump in if you want. Mrs. Jordan, our counselor, I've had her review it. Student council has looked over it after it was revised. And we all agree that this is fair.
Two questions. Is this the whole policy, this one page, or was there another?
Nope, that's it.
And then any idea when the last time the board last updated the policy?
Well, I don't know if there was any changes this year at the beginning of the year.
I don't think so, just because I really didn't see anything that stuck out. Yeah. I actually didn't know if it'd been like ten years, I couldn't remember.
There's always a few little things when we approve a handbook every year. I know that there were some different things that I went through and adjusted, like the short length and things like that, the wording and the language there.
That's fine, I was just trying to remember it last time.
And like I said, I think that getting our student council involved in those conversations, you know, I think that's good. I think that gives them a voice, and I think the more we do that, the more confident they're gonna feel to come to us and talk about different issues and try to work together. And that's what we did here. And like I said, they felt like it was fair, and they, you know, they were, they shared their opinions. It wasn't that they just sat there and wanted me to tell them what to say or anything like that. So it was a good conversation.
Any other questions on the policy change?
So you think the students are pretty happy with the policy?
Well, I mean, for the most part. I know that they're not all gonna be happy.
They didn't wanna go to uniforms?
No, nope. And like I said at the beginning, and I told them the same thing, there is not ever going to be a perfect dress code. There just won't be. There will always be differences of opinion on what should be appropriate and not appropriate, certain lengths and all of those things. It will never be perfect. It will never be perfect. The main purpose though, as it states in here, is to prevent material substantial disruption to the educational process for all students. Now, where that disruption comes from can be debated as well. But at this point, I feel like this gives us the best opportunity to not have those distractions. Like I said, we can argue and debate on why those distractions are there, but I feel like that is another, another topic, another area. And we're, you know, we're doing things to address that, that side of the concern as well.
Any other comments, questions? If not, I'll make a motion to approve Bryce's recommendation on the amendments to the Middle School High School Dress Code policy for the 2021-22 school year. Do I have a second? Does there a second? Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gilson?
Yes.
Number five, consideration and action to approve the annual school board election resolution.
This is something we do every year, with our school board elections. They'll be coming up, I believe, that you're wearing. I'll have to check the date to make sure if this is kind of an annual thing or if we need to.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Curtis, second. Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gilson?
Yes.
Number six, consideration and action to close voting precincts 76005 and Woods County and voting precincts 020110 in Alphalfe County due to, due to there being a hundred or fewer registered voters in these two precincts.
Second thing we, we did.
Does there a second? Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gilson?
Yes.
Number seven, principals' reports and the presentation of the annual dropout and student college remediation report.
All right, so, I've got a lot. I've got like two pages. First thing I'll talk about is enrollment October 1. It's kind of our big number. Those reports are all due then this week. Our high school, as of October 1, had 105 students enrolled in it, which is actually up two from where it was last year at this time. Our middle school had 93, which was up 10 students from where we were at last year at this time. So, on October 1st. As always, every year, we have to present the dropout report and the college remediation report. The dropout report is 2019-20 data, so we're almost two years out from that data. And our high school had 2.6. Now, what's considered a dropout is if somebody leaves our school and we don't get record requests. So, it's really hard sometimes to find out, and it doesn't count till they're graduated cohort. So, if somebody went to school here eighth grade and left, and nobody ever got record requests, they were going to quote-unquote homeschool themselves, they're gonna be considered a dropout for us. But it doesn't go on until they're graduating, cohort graduates. So, when we had 2.6 in the graduating year of 2020, you know, it's hard to come back. For me, I talked to Mr. Jordan, and we could, we could think of one, but we couldn't think of all of them. So, if, if they go out of state and we don't hear record requests, which happens sometimes, then as long as they're dropped off our rolls without any reason, they go on as per dropout, so.
Sure there's a backlog on all that too, right?
I'm sure. Yeah, well, we're in a 2021-22 school year, and this is the 1920 data. So, we're about two years out. And so, college remediation is from the freshman of the 2019, so 1920 school year, first time freshman, first time degree-seeking freshman. So, in 2019, that fall, we had 11 students enrolled in college, two of which needed remediation services in college. So, two out of 11 isn't too bad. So, one class or two classes, so. But that's our, that was our college remediation from 2019, so the 1920 school year. So, we're two years away from that. I think, I think I talked to Mr. Jordan, and that was a pretty small class too, so. Any questions? I'll explain as good as I can, but it's, some of the data is just, just there, with no explanation.
Right.
Other than that, we have a lot of stuff going on, and this is in no particular order. We started LifeWise lessons with our sixth through ninth graders to teach social-emotional learning to our students. These lessons will be in various classes through this semester. They try to get in an elective class and talk to LifeWise comes and talks to our students about social-emotional things. Usually sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade a lot of times, sometimes our high school too. We began ICAP. A parent came from Northwest Tech comes over, and they really did about working with the ICAP, that individual career academic plan, which they start, I believe it's freshman, eighth grade, and then it really, it leads them to a career path, is what it attracted me for our college bound. So, eighth through 12 graders to work on plans for their future plan and goals. Ms. Jordan hosted an evening scholarship 101 meeting with juniors and seniors and their families to get a jumpstart on the scholarship application. She had that, I don't remember the date, but it was a pretty good turnout, she said that for that though, just to help kids on learning where to look for scholarships and how to fill those scholarships out. She had the StuCo host a blood drive for CHS, and we're still, you know, people aren't sure about giving blood yet, so. But we had 24 donations, which on any blood drive, that's pretty big. So, to get 24, because a lot of everybody, just because you're gonna come donate, doesn't mean you can donate. So, we had 24 donations to the OBI. So, that's, that's a pretty good turnout, because that's like an 11 to three blood drive, so, four hours. That's, that's pretty good blood drive. All the seniors went to the college fair on campus at Northwestern. Several gifted and talented students, 11th through 12th graders, attended an OSU pre-help roundup at OSU Medical School in Tulsa, where they attended classes about health career options. And an opportunity to sign up, Ms. Jordan took a suburb of Queens students over there that were gifted and talented. Several juniors and seniors participated in the School Day ACT at Cherokee on October 5, which was a free ACT courtesy of Oklahoma State Department of it. So, I think that's our one free one this year. And we had several, several, thank you. Ms. Jordan is hosting a financial aid meeting tonight for senior, oh, I don't think she had it tonight. Northwestern came over and helped students fill out FASR, I believe it was last week. So, I think she's sent some helpings that night with all this stuff, but. And there were several that came and filled out their FASR forms. Some of them hadn't completely done when they left, which is huge, because there's all sorts of grants, bail grants, and scholarships to get money to help them in college. Of course, Lawderye and Kenrye have made generous donations to our special student fund of $1,000. This will help youth, pre-K through 12 students who might need something throughout the year. The Wright family is always generous on anything that we, I've ever seen anybody ask for, and they try to help out where they can, so. That's just a small donation. I mean, it's huge for us, but, so we can make sure kids have what they need, you know, whether it's shoes and coat. You know, every year they send coats as well when it starts getting cold. They'll just go buy some and bring them, so they don't, they don't make money that we can go buy them, and then they end up going and buying and bringing them to us anyway, so. We always appreciate them. Another thing, Alphalfe County Farm Bureau essay contest. There's a contest that the Farm Bureau does every year. In Division, Division 1, which I believe is, is the middle school division, in the essay contest, Tessa Littlefield was first place, and Veronica Castro won second in the essay contest. And then in Division 2, which I believe is the high school division, first place was Bailey Oyster, and third place was Frank Fells. And I'm sure I'm missing a lot of stuff. One thing, I know meat salesman Snyder, she got back, she said several students indoor, things at the state fair and at Tulsa did very well. They went to the area sporting place yesterday, or supply, I believe is where that's at. And at lunch today, she hadn't gotten results yet. So, we had two students that shot, I believe she said 15 out of 20, so not too bad for the first time to go. So, we were still waiting on it. She wasn't sure if that would make the cut. She said it's usually a little bit higher than that, but this year she wasn't sure. So, she emailed, but hadn't gotten results from that yet. FFA meat sales were, the meat will be delivered tomorrow, so, blue and gold DJs and... What's that, I forget? There's three of them. Right, but it will be here tomorrow, so. Don't, then you're in ICAP.
TND.
TND, yes, yes, thank you. And then, Ms. Gutch was chosen to be part of the CT Women in Leadership Program through Career Tech. It's, the purpose of it is, the CT Women in Leadership Program is to create a professional learning community that will maximize leadership opportunities for women in career tech education, so that's pretty big. She said she was chosen that, and will have to miss several days next spring to go around to different career texts and visit with them, so. Like I said, I'm sure I've missed something, but. Football Thursday night at Oak Hill? One act. Oh, they were regional runner-up, yes. How can I leave that up? Regional runner-up. Mr. Sean Hocker went over and watched, and it's the play that goes wrong, I believe is what the title of his, and something went wrong, and he said that they battled right through that and really didn't know that something went wrong, but that their set started falling apart and then didn't fall apart like it was supposed to. So, they were, they were regional runner-ups, so they will go to Pete Hat State one act October 30. So.
Will they be doing that here as well?
I'm not sure on the date yet. I'm sure they will.
I bet we did persuade Mr. Parrish to do that, because it's, it's, it's great, as always. He does a phenomenal job. They did a fantastic job that day, but it's hilarious.
That all you got?
That's all I have, I believe.
Yep. We've had lots of good stuff going on at the elementary school. We brought back Friday finales. We're on Fridays. We all get together in the gym and do our pledge of allegiance. We're teaching the kids this school song. Some of us can't remember it, so we can help Kelly Fanny sing, Kelly Fanny sings at football games. And we've had a lot to celebrate at our Friday finales. One thing we're doing this year is recognizing an academic award winner once a month for each grade level, and then also a kindness award for each grade level once a month. So, our academic award winners for September, we had one for each grade level, were Jack Barker from fifth, Claylee Bussard in fourth, Austin Hensley was in the third grade, Natalie Efgart for second, Cruz Bussard for first, Paisley Hewitt for kindergarten, and Paxton Fulham in pre-K. And then the chief award winner, winners for kindness were Harper Laramore in fifth, Xander Nelson in fourth, Candace Dixon third, Stratton Green in second, Princeton Sadler in first, Jack Keg in kindergarten, and Logan Parks in pre-K. And so, one thing we did to kind of celebrate then was we had a little pizza party for all the little winners, where we just ate some pizza and had some drinks, and so that was, that was fun. We've also had a few coloring contests. The AFR coloring contest actually happened last February, but they brought our prizes by just recently, so. Teak and Rose won third, Fort Roberts second, and his sister Katera Roberts won first in the Level 2. And then in Level 1, Alonte Malden won second place locally. And then we had one winner who went to the state level, and they won fourth place overall in the entire state, and their poster was at the Capitol, and it was Hadley Patterson. So, that was kind of exciting. We've most recently had the book fair going on. Mrs. Cudmore does an amazing job dressing up as book characters and things like that to make it fun for the kids, so that's going on right now. Parent-teacher conferences, of course. First night was tonight. We had a good turnout, and then we'll finish up tomorrow. We did our fundraiser, which was the reading fundraiser, where we fill out the emails and things like that, and then our teachers received so much money in gift cards that they can use for books for their own classroom, which is amazing. And our elementary school raised $1,200. It was a great fundraiser for our school. Tomorrow, we're gonna celebrate our first, first nine weeks AR party. We had 134 students meet their AR goals. So, we'll be having some extra recess and celebrating that tomorrow. As far as our October 1 numbers, last year we had 224 students on October 1, and this year we had 212, but remember that we also lost a pre-K and a three-year-old program. So, our numbers are up even though they're down.
Right.
Because we, we lost, lost that. I, I forgot one coloring contest. We had the local farm coloring contest, and third place was Elizabeth Waugh, second place was Colton Rain, and first place was Mariska Whitesides. So, these contests have been really fun to show in front of everybody at Friday finale and recognizing students, but we've just been having a lot of fun over there.
Number eight, superintendent's report.
They pretty well covered most everything. I don't have a whole lot. I did wanna kind of touch base again on what I'm trying to do with the student council. We've had lots of conversations and meetings outside of what we talked about tonight, trying to do some things moving forward, some teacher appreciation type stuff, district-wide. And so, I think there's gonna be some, some new things that come out of that, and really trying to just visit with them and kind of get their perspective on our school and our school culture and climate, things that we do well and things that we don't do so well, and try to build on those strengths and address the weaknesses. But again, it's, it's, it's been very interesting to hear it and, you know, try to kind of see those things from their perspective. So, I, I think that's gonna be a very positive thing that we'll do, and those meetings, Mrs. Jordan and I work together, and we usually just kind of do a working lunch during the day, and they go down and get their, get their food, come back here, and we sit and we have those meetings. And so, trying to do those once a month, and looking forward to the good things that are gonna come out of that. On some not-so-fun notes, tax protests will continue. There is a little over $5 million being protested again. And so, you know, it is, it's becoming very, very serious for our, for our district and our community the longer these oil and gas companies continue to do this to us. It's, it's frustrating. I probably, I can't say all the things that I wanna say about it, but there has to be, there has to be some things addressed at the state level to take care of some of these problems, because right now, there's nothing in place that would prevent these companies from continuing to do this as long as they want. For most of them, it has become part of their business model. And that's, that's frustrating. And when you look around and you see the possibilities and the things that we could correct, and we're just not able to because our hands continue to be tied. Right now, the latest number from our assessor is there's, there's about $800,000 held up in escrow that should be paid to us, and that could do a lot. I mean, that could do a lot for our schools right now, but we can't get that until these things are resolved. There was supposed to be a hearing tomorrow concerning the company and their lawsuit, but there were some things that came up COVID-related, and that's been pushed back until we don't know, I don't think we know when.
It's convenient.
So, that's kind of been the story of these things. They, they just continue to get delayed. I will say that there are some conversations finally starting to take place with some of our legislatures looking into this finally. And there is, there is a committee. They heard from several superintendents. This is not just a problem that's for us. This is going on all across the state. And right now, I just mentioned that there's $800,000 in escrow held up that's due to us. There's $80 million dollars across the state held up in tax protests across the state that should be paid out to schools that's not because of oil and gas companies, wind farms, those companies that are protesting those taxes. And so, they are looking at this. I don't know what's gonna come of it. Right now, it's more of a fact-finding committee. And they're listening to school superintendents, they're listening to county assessors and the Assessors Association representatives. They're also hearing from representatives from those companies and how those things are being done. Again, I don't know if there will be much that comes of it, but it, it is better than where it were, I think, a year ago when none of that was happening. So, at least some of those conversations are taking place. I've started to have some conversations just here locally with our assessor, kind of what some longer-term things, you know, could look like, but there's just too many variables really to... I've started to have some conversations just here locally with our assessor, kind of what some longer-term things, you know, could look like, but there's just too many variables really to feel, you know, good about some of those numbers and projections right now because there's too many things up in the air. I've also started talking to our representatives at the legislature and what can be done and what routes that we can take. Right now, I think the best that we can do is when there are things like this hearing that will come up, we need to have a presence and we've got to start doing some things because these are things that will not just affect our school, but they will affect our community as these protests continue when it comes to our sinking fund and our bond schedules. And when those protests take money out of those, that has to be made up from somewhere. And so the longer these companies refuse to pay their taxes, it's going to get pushed off on the smaller local taxpayers and that's not right. And something's got to be done about it, so we're fighting as hard as we can. We're doing everything that we can on our side of it to do the right thing and not, you know, burden, placing burdens anywhere else. But there's a lot of this that is just completely out of our, our control. But what we can control, we're working hard to take care of it. So, you know, right now, like I've said in the past, gross reduction is up and it's staying up. Those projections look right now like they're going to hold steady for sure through the end of the year, so, you know, that's good news. The cuts that we've made, and I will bring a budget to you next month, is what I think that could look like. Like I said, in the past, it's going to be tighty. And we're doing the best we can to continue to cut costs, but there's some things that are outside of our control that if we could get some resolved, you know, if there could be some things that could be fixed, it would sure put us on stable ground, I'm going to say that. So lots of battles like that to fight and we're going to continue to do that as much as we can and advocate for our school and community. Other than that, everything is going pretty well. We've had to date, just a quick COVID update. We've had eight total cases between student staff since the beginning of the year. This first nine weeks, all eight of those cases have recovered and either the staff or the students are back in class. And we currently have no cases right now, so everything's good on that side of it. I think that's about all I have to report on.
Thanks Bryce, any new business online?
No new business.
You, I think I make a motion for adjournment, do I have a second?
Okay.
Curtis?
Second.
Littlefield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Seven fifty-two. Thank you.
I'd like to insert.
Oops.
There's one contract, Sarah, that all of you need to sign.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Pass that around.
Dress code policy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Desiree, you got some extra stuff up here?
I will.
Catherine, I'm going to wait here probably.
I need to make him one too.
Oh, no, I don't know. I got it. It is a clerk, I guess.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I just made a couple of stars, so.
No, I know. No, we'll have to wait for her, yeah, I don't know what I think.
That's okay, I just know that I'm-
No, you do have to sign that paper. She'll just have to wait for Amber on this.
Is it for all of us or just you or is it Amber?